Aloha and good morning, welcome to the House of Representatives Committee on Water and Land. Our hearing today, Thursday, March 17th. It's eight thirty AM, we're here in conference room four thirty and we're welcoming testifiers here in person, which is wonderful, thank you all for being here, and we have testifiers via video conference as well. In order to make sure that we get through as many people as possible for testimony, please try to limit your comments to about two minutes and I'll ask you to summarize at that point. But I want to make sure I hear everything that you have to say. Because we have to adjourn for other hearings this morning. If we have to ask you to summarize, I'll ask you to do that and I appreciate your participation, your cooperation. For those who are testifying remotely, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify and then after your testimony is complete, mute yourself and turn your video off. If you have technical issues, use the Zoom chat function that only goes to our technical staff and so they can assist you with that. If you're disconnected while you're testifying, don't worry, try to rejoin, I'll try to do my best to give you time to continue your testimony. If for some reason the network fails and we have to reschedule, we'll do that, we'll put out appropriate notice. And please just conduct yourself with good civility and kindness and courtesy and we'll be just fine today at our hearing. Members, let's go ahead and get started. At the top of the agenda, Senate Bill two seven five two relating to abandoned wells. First up, we have the Department of Taxation, please proceed.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair members, Josh Michaels on behalf of the Director of Tax. The department will stand on testimony offering comments, happy to answer any questions, thank you very much, Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thanks very much. Next, we have testimony from DLNR Commission on Water Resource Management, please proceed.
Good morning Chair members. Kaleo Manuel, our Deputy Director expresses his regrets for not being here today, so I'm testifying in support, strong support, and we stand by our written testimony and I am happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, and just to make sure, you're Mr. Ryan Imata, right?
Yes, Ryan Imata, State Commission on Water Resource Management.
Excellent, excellent, thank you for being here Ryan, appreciate that. Next, we have received written comments from the Department of Budget and Finance and we have testimony from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, please proceed.
Good morning Chair, members of the committee, Jane McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments submitted on the measure, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from Hawaii Realtors, Mr. Ken Hiraki, please proceed.
Hi, good morning. Our organization opposes Senate Bill two five seven two S D two. Under Hawaii revised statutes five oh eight T, sellers are required to disclose all material facts that are within the knowledge or control of the seller or can be observed from visible, accessible areas. We're opposed to this measure because unless the seller seals a well themselves, they could have no knowledge of the presence of a well that was abandoned by a prior owner years ago because it would be hidden from view, such as on large tracts of land on the island of Hawaii. Additionally, this measure places an unreasonable duty of disclosure upon the seller, even if they had no knowledge of the existence of an abandoned well. They impose a liability on the seller for the costs of filling and sealing a well the seller had no knowledge of. Our organization would also like to note that it could be years before the existence of an abandoned well discovered from the property and that the property may have changed owners multiple times. As such, determining liability could be extremely difficult, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hiraki. Next, we have received written testimony in opposition from an individual, Regina Gregory. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure, virtually, remote testimony? Or in the room? Hearing none, members, any questions for our testifiers? Representative Kobayashi.
For DLNR. The bill's purpose section talks about tax credit to taxpayers who are required to seal abandoned wells. Is that a requirement and who makes that requirement?
The determination of whether a well needs to be abandoned would be determined through those positions that are created by the bill. And so basically, the commission makes that determination based on risk assessment and sort of vulnerability of aquifer, a lot of different things. As we know lately, aquifer protection has been a big issue with Red Hill. So it's something that we would make the assessment on to determine if a well is required to be abandoned, thanks.
So right now, you don't have such a requirement, but you will create a requirement if positions are grabbed?
No, I'm sorry, we do have the requirement for an owner to seal a well if it poses the risk of contamination. I guess that requirement is sort of pending our assessment on the risk of a well. So the requirement is there, but it comes down to individual wells and our assessment on whether they pose risks or not.
Has this bill ever had the blank dollar amounts filled in?
The dollar amounts?
Yeah.
For the cost of sealing wells?
No. They're blank dollar amounts as to how much you would get per taxable year, et cetera.
Oh, I see, yeah. I think that's really, again, that would be based upon the, based upon the individual cost to seal each wells. So I think it might be assessed as a percentage?
No, I mean, oftentimes you have blank dollar amounts when the dollar amounts are known. But in this case, it seems that the dollar amounts or the percentages are unknown. And never proposed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't really comment on that right now, I can find out for you.
Thank you, Representative Kobayashi, other questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on, thank you. Senate Bill two zero six five relating to fishing. And this prohibits the possession and use of unmanned aerial vehicles in state waters for purposes of fishing. First up, we have DLNR Division of Aquatic Resources, please proceed.
Aloha Chair Karna, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. Brian Nielsen, Administrator for Division of Aquatic Resources, representing the department on this measure. We stand on our written testimony in support, providing some comments for the committee to consider, happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much, and members, I urge you to look at the written testimony of DAR because they also propose an amendment. Okay, next, we have Ms. Lamana Damate, Hawaii State Ahamoku, and we welcome her in person, please proceed.
Aloha, thank you Chair, and aloha Chair and Vice Chair Bronco and Representative. Ahamoku stands in strong support of this bill. And you have our written testimony before you, we stand on that testimony. I would like to add that I have been getting calls from certain islands that are in support of this bill, particularly Me'ehau, an unmanned drone or whatever. Right now, they're already having problems with outside people coming in to fish and pick coastal marine species. The other people on Hawaii were from the Nepali coast, on Hawaii Island, Ka'ou, particularly Tu'na and Ka'outulehu and Kona. Maui, Hana and Kikilin, and particularly Amalaka'i, the Halava and Ho'olehua Districts. These are all areas where there are cultural practitioners, lavai'a. And the fear is that an unmanned drone would be able to pinpoint their fishing co-op and their coastal areas where they gather. So I just wanted to add that, thank you for the opportunity to testify and I'll be available for questions if needed, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, pleasure to have you here. Next, we have written testimony in support from the Hawaii Fishermen's Alliance for Conservation and Tradition, Bill Fernandez. We have written testimony in support from another individual, Jennifer Kupak. Testimony and written testimony in opposition from Albert Nakaji. And we have testimony in support from Clayton Kubo, remote testimony, Mr. Kubo, if you're available, please proceed.
Clayton Kubo, I'm here in Hawaii, support the measure. And I, as far as eight, what is it, version two, right? It says permit, yeah, from DLNR Division of Aquatic Resources. Please make sure that if this measure passes, that DLNR Division of Aquatic Resources will immediately administer permits, not like the shark bill. So please make sure that happens, thank you very much for having me testify, aloha.
Thank you, aloha, mahalo, Mr. Kubo. Next, we have testimony in support from Thomas McNorton via remote testimony, Mr. McNorton, if you're available, please proceed.
Hello, good morning everyone, I apologize for submitting my written testimony late, but my name is Thomas Norton and I'm a social work major at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. I fish for recreational purposes and I'm in support of Bell SB two zero six five. I witnessed individuals leaving their pala out in the ocean without hesitation of retrieving their tackle. There is the irresponsibility of others has, you know, it puts many sea animals at risk and it is vital to take care of the ocean as it does for us. I'm in support of this bill because it offers a viable solution for taking care of our oceans and through this change, the benefits it offers will be of significance, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to give testimony via remote testimony? Or anyone in the room? Seeing none, members, any questions? Any questions? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next measure, Senate Bill 2767 relating to fish aggregation devices. First up on this, we have the Division of Aquatic Resources, Mr. Brian Nielsen. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair. Brian Nielsen, Division of Aquatic Resources, standing on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we've received written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance, the Hawaii Fishermen's Alliance for Conservation and Tradition. That's Phil Fernandez. And also, written testimony in opposition from Regina Gregory. And then testimony in support from numerous individuals, including Randy Cates, Spencer Vander Kamp, Carl Gelling, Senior, Jesse White, Steve Kaiser, and Garrett Oyama. And finally, we have testimony via remote testimony from Clayton Kubo. Mr. Kubo, please proceed.
Oh, Clayton Kubo again, I'm here, Kauai, support. That's all I get to say.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you being here, Mr. Kubo. Are there any other testifiers wishing to provide testimony on this measure via remote testimony or in the room? Seeing none, members, any questions on this bill? We did hear a measure much like this, and of course, we're looking for funding within the budget. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Okay, next bill, Senate Bill 3027 relating to beaches. On this, we have testimony with comments from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Ms. Justine Neehi Poli, if you're there, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. And we did submit written testimony. And we offered potential amendments, but we just seek to clarify some of the legislative intent. We've got two proposed amendments, but it does depend on what the intent of this measure is. So just offer, if it is intended to inform and develop a policy, that it be placed in the state priority guidelines with some amendments. But if the intent is to develop an actual study and assessment, we have a recommendation that it be submitted as a or provided as a budget proviso. So there's a little bit of a clarification, I think, that we need for this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Neehi Poli. And next, we have testimony with comments from DLNR, Mr. Michael Kane, who is here in person. Welcome. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. Michael Kane, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We offer comments. We absolutely see the need for a coordinated statewide policy to address shoreline issues. We do need to note that the current bill repeats work that we've already done. And we want to keep moving the needle forward, so to speak. So we stand by our comments, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure remotely or in the room? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Next, we have Senate Bill 872 relating to the Commission on Water Resource Management. First up, we have Department of Hawaiian Homeland, Mr. William Isla, in support. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Bronco, and thank you for hearing this bill. We speak in strong support of this bill that would add, either the chair or the chairs designated as an ex-official member of the Commission on Water Resources. And I would point out that having the Department of Hawaiian Homelands have a representative on the Water Commission, it would provide no more conflict of interest than having the State Department of Health be on the commission right now. And with that, I will stand by and be ready for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Isla. Next, we have DLNR, Commission on Water Resource Management. I think it's probably Mr. Imata. Please proceed.
Suzanne Case.
Oh, Chair Case, please proceed.
Chair of DLNR and of the Water Commission, speaking on behalf of Seaworm for this bill. And you have our written testimony. We very respectfully oppose the measure. And I just want to say, you know, I think this is probably a historical issue of DHHL not being able to make good advances on water reservations. But as you can see in our testimony, we actually have made very significant progress in recent years. So I think we have now kind of a practice and mechanism for good collaboration between DHHL and the Water Commission staff on these. And we have been doing them, the reservations, when there are action items for which they're called, which call for the reservations. We just did several more on Tuesday at the Water Commission meeting. That was to initiate rulemaking on Molokai for some water reservations. It's a designated management area, so you have to do it by rulemaking. But we have made very significant progress. And so for that, I, you know, I mean, maybe I have a different perspective because mine is a current perspective. But I believe it's DHHL's concern is being met now. And we do have some concerns that it would be at least confusing for DHHL to be on the commission and voting on their reservations. And also, it adds, you know, it adds another member to the Water Commission without necessarily having expertise in water management. And that creates an even number of commissioners, which is complicated for voting. And also adds, we already have seven commissioners. And so I just think that with the more streamlined approach we have and the actual solutions that we have implemented, I feel pretty confident that we're on the right path here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Case. Appreciate you pointing out in your testimony the work you have done to address these requests from DHHL. Thank you. Next, we have testimony from Hawaii State Ahamoku, Ms. Lamana Damate. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. You have our written testimony of support. And in light of what Chair Case has also just said, she's right. We have worked with Seaworm on separate water issues dealing with the Hawaiian homes, homelands. Our letter of support was based upon the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act that requires Hawaiian homes to get priority reservations. So we stand on our testimony of support. But I would like to add that what Chair Case had said is, has a lot of merit as well. And we did not think about the number of voters that would be on the board. And it would cause, it might cause a problem with the voting. So we have to stand on our testimony of support, but I ask that you cooperate are also agreements with the points that Chair Case said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And members, we have received testimony in writing in support from various organizations and individuals. Edward Ayao, P'ilani Ka'opuiki, Melody Aduhua, Le'omomi Khan, and Benton Tang. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, Senate Bill 872 remotely or in the room? Seeing none, members, questions? Representative Kobayashi.
For DLNR. Your testimony says that you have approved 28 reservations and oral testimony said that several more were approved recently on Tuesday. How many were not approved or not acted upon?
So, and just to clarify, on Tuesday, it's a slightly different process for a designated water management area. So we initiated rulemaking, but it was, you know, it's a universal approval vote to approve it. We didn't have any that were not approved. So I think it was, you know, I think, and I've checked into this a little bit. You know, we have now a practice of of doing the, you know, initiating the consultation and working with DHHL for them to do their part. They have to do their own process to get beneficiary input on these. So it does, it does take a little while. And they are tied to, I mean, our actions have been tied to actual water permits or approval processes on water where, you know, you want to make sure DHHL has their reservations in place before you make further allocations. So, you know, we, you know, just, we are doing it. And, you know, maybe it was just a matter of getting a process going and getting, you know, getting a way of working together on these when an action is triggered. So to answer your question, none were not approved.
The testimony also talks about 28 reservations totaling 32 million gallons per day. 32 million gallons per day seems small relative to the total allocations.
Those are in numerous locations statewide, and they are all tied to home, home, home home areas development that are current or planned that DHHL has. So their domestic and agriculture allocations, they're all very carefully calculated to, you know, ensure that they have the amount of water that they'll need for their plants without, you know, obviously without waste because we don't want anyone.
What I'm trying to get at is that the total gallons per day, the total cases that might involve DHHL are relatively small in context of everything the Water Commission does. And I would think that either HHL representative be given some voice or some role in HHL matters, but not in every single water matter.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, and we don't, you know, not all of the agenda items are ones that trigger, in fact, a great minority of them trigger these DHHL evaluations anyway. And so it is, it is not, you know, it's not, it's not the majority of the work of the Water Commission. It's important that DHHL reservations are fully considered when they're necessary, but it's not the bulk of the work of the Water Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Other questions? Vice Chair Bronco, please proceed.
For Chair Isla, please.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Chair, could you explain to me the special right to water that the Department of Hawaiian Homelands or the Hawaiian Homelands Commission Act outlines?
Yes, because the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act predates statehood, there are certain rights to water that was reserved at the time of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act's approval. I would, you know, I want to thank Chair Case. The commission has been very, very good to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands when it comes to our requests for the reservations of water. However, what's really driving this request for a seat on the commission is that our beneficiaries also have a keen interest in Article 12, Section 7 of the state constitution that deals with native Hawaiian gathering rights. And so if you go to the purpose, if you go to the findings of 171(c)101, it goes beyond just reserving adequate reserves of water for current and foreseeable uses of the department, right? So the beneficiaries are concerned that in the larger scheme, they would want us, because we have a pre-existing claim to water, to be involved in the management, the planning, the regulation, and the conservation of water, which all lead to having resources available for our current and future reserves, reservations. So this is really what is driving this. It's not just making sure that we comply with part of the findings of the legislature regarding to Section 174(c)101, subsection A. That's really, and I respectfully understand what Chair Case is saying. And, you know, I've been in her shoes, so I know what it's like. However, things are changing on the ground. Things are changing in Hawaii society. And our beneficiaries are asking for a more recognized voice. So thank you for asking that question.
Thank you.
Chair Isla, a question from me. Do you have people on staff at the Department of Hawaiian Homelands that have expertise in water resource management?
We have consultants that have expertise in water management.
So if you were to be on, if there was a representative of DHHL on the Commission of Water Resource Management, you're not going to be able to use a consultant all the time to advise you. How do you foresee you being able to carry out responsibilities on the commission without having that expertise within the department?
Our staff is certainly acquiring expertise in all of these cases that are being adjudicated in court, as well as all of these legislative discussions that are occurring. So I wouldn't say they're experts, but they're well well experienced in the water code and in the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and in the Constitution of Section, excuse me, Constitution of Section 101, Section 11, Article 12, Section 7. So we are developing that. We certainly can develop that. It's actually our kuliana to develop that. And this is part of the first step of executing our kuliana. And I thank you for your question.
So if you, thank you. If Hawaiian Homelands were to be provided, or if the Chair of Hawaiian Homes Commission or your designate were to serve on the Commission of Water Resource Management, you would be prepared to build that capacity, a technical capacity within the department, so that you would be capable of serving with that content expertise?
We would add to the expertise that staff already has, but I wouldn't classify them as experts. You know, they don't have degrees in hydrology and things like that. They do have a good understanding of the water code, although case law that that up to the water code and all of the water decisions. And they for sure understand Section 221 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Members, other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much to our testifiers and to the members for the questions. Next, we have Senate Bill 2889 relating to water catchment systems. On this measure, we have testimony in opposition from the Department of Health and testimony with comments from the Board of Water Supply, City County Honolulu. And testimony, written testimony in support from the Hawaii Tropical Fruit Growers, Mr. Ken Love. Written testimony in opposition from Gerard Silva. Written testimony in support from Andrea Quinn. And testimony in support from Rourke Reagan. Is Rourke Reagan available to present testimony? No, I don't see Rourke Reagan. Members, please refer to testimony in support in writing provided by Rourke Reagan. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure here in the room or remote testimony? Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure here in the room or remote testimony? Seeing none, members, any questions? Oh, do we have somebody here from Health, Department of Health?
Ah, yes. Good, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Gaudensha Lopez, Chief of the Safe Drinking Water Branch. Department of Health stands on our written testimony in opposition of the measure. I'll be available to answer questions. Thank you for, for the opportunity to testify.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? If I, I'd like to ask the Department of Health a question about, in their testimony, you're, you have many reasons for opposing this, but could you please briefly summarize them for the members of the public who are watching this and our members here?
Yes, the Safe Drinking Water Branch jurisdiction ends not, does not include the premise plumbing. And there's a, this, this bill would, would introduce the possibility of extending our jurisdiction to premise plumbing, which is very complicated. There, there are many factors involved. It was originally, this, this measure was originally stated around the letting copper testing under 340e 4.8 for residents, in which the, the department will assist the resident in subsidizing the cost of the testing. We just want to make sure that when you are to meet, for businesses to meet the Sidwell or Safe Drinking Water Act, the, the, the cost of that testing is, is, there's a, there's a whole bunch of other analysts that need to be tested. We estimate in excess of 3,200 a year. And we're not sure, you know, whether the, the state is going to burden that cost because it was, it's essentially, the measure is unknown as far as who's going to burn in that cost at this point. In addition to that, the public water systems or regulated bodies will require a distribution system operator. That's an additional cost that the business would have to burden. For, we, we're not sure what the small system, like a personal residence would cost, but on the smaller side of our, our public water systems is about 2,000 a month. On the larger end is about 10,000 a month. There's a tremendous amount of responsibility when you meet the primary drinking water standards and is a tremendous, tremendous amount of cost because of the, the stakes involved with providing safe drinking water to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could speak to the question that other testifiers have brought up, they want to use catchment water for food businesses. Could you speak to that issue in particular?
Well, the Safe Drinking Water Branch is involved with the quality of the water. The Food Safety Branch regulates the use of that water for that purpose. And it's my understanding that under their current regulation, it does, it does not allow catchment water for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Any other questions, members? Representative Kobayashi?
I think there's a problem with this bill. The bill talks about use of water for business activities, which is not defined. But business activities could go far beyond food. You could have agricultural catchment or any kind of catchment that is applied to some whole business other than food. Do we have to define business activity?
Not sure if the Department.
Oh, I mean, that's, I guess for DOH.
Any comment on that from the Department of Health?
Yeah, that, that is a concern because we're, we're not sure who, how would we craft a bill with, without knowing the intended use of it, that, and an extent of use. We also have issues with, with the bill in the beginning saying that establish regulatory authority over, over these businesses for that use of the water. And at the end states that it's an unregulated program. So there's, there's some conflicts with, within how the bill is written. And we, we would appreciate clarification on that.
Thank you. Would you, Department of Health, be able to comment on the use of catchment water and whether that would actually qualify under the Food Safety Modernization Act requirements for use for processing agricultural products? Is that allowed?
I'm, that is not my branch. I don't have expertise in, in their regulations. My apologies.
No, no, it's fine. That's fine. You're a smart guy, but you can't know everything. We just happen to have somebody in the room here that is an expert in agriculture. And I wondered if I might be able to ask Mr. Miyamoto to come up and I could ask a question because you may know, is water catchment? This is Mr. Miyamoto with the Farm Bureau, Hawaii Farm Bureau. Under FSMA, under the Food Safety Modernization Act, is it allowable to use catchment water?
My understanding, thank you, Chair. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. My understanding for FSMA food safety requirement, it would need to be treated. There are water requirements. So if it's just straight catchment, as far as for processing, I think was brought up by a previous testifier, it, it probably wouldn't be allowed and then compliance with Food Safety FSMA regulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you being willing to come up and answer a question on a bill you weren't here to testify on, but since you're our expert, I thought I'd ask. Okay, any other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much for that discussion. Next, we have Senate Bill 2757. This is relating to historic preservation. First up, we have Dr. Alan Downer with the State Historic Preservation Division in support. Please proceed, Dr. Downer.
Oh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Alan Downer, Administrator of the State Historic Preservation Division. And the department stands on its written testimony in strong support. We happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And members, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance and written testimony in support from the Historic Hawaii Foundation. Is there anyone else in the room or remote testimony wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2757? Seeing none, members, any questions? No questions, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next is Senate Bill 2766 relating to land use. This is asking Office of Planning and Sustainable Development to perform a study to refine rural district policies and make recommendations to facilitate the reclassification of lands from ag district to rural district. On this measure, we have first up testimony in support from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. Please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. This is Aaron Sitodal for the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We stand on our testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from the Land Use Commission, Mr. Daniel Orandanker. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Daniel Oradankar, Executive Officer for the Land Use Commission. We stand on our written testimony in opposition. We don't feel that expenditure is necessary at this time for this. We've been working closely with the counties with regard to this issue and believe that there's enough information available to resolve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from the Department of Agriculture, Ms. Phyllis Shumabukuro Geiser. Please proceed.
Aloha and good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Phyllis Shumabukuro Geiser, Chairperson, Hawaii Department of Agriculture. We stand on our written testimony in support and we look forward to assisting Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in undertaking the important study. We're available to answer questions and Morris Atta is, had to leave for another hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. And next, we have testimony in support from Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau. Mr. Miyamoto is here in person. Please proceed, sir.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support. I just wanted to point out that our support is in no way advocating for the removal of productive agricultural lands from agricultural designation. However, rural designation can serve as an interface between agriculture and urban. In rural, ag is an option, not a requirement. This may address some of the fake farms and gentleman farm issues that we're having. So we do support this measure. And again, in our testimony, it says at some point agriculture was a catch-all. So maybe time to, to look at quite, quite possibly those more marginal lands being redetained for rural where agriculture is still an option. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. Members, we have written testimony in opposition from Gerard Silva, written testimony in support from Andrea Quinn, and written testimony in support from James McCully. Is there anyone else here in the room or via remote testimony who wishes to testify on Senate Bill 2766? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Senate Bill 2398 relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. This creates the Pulehunui Community Development District. First up, we have testimony from DLNR. DLNR Representative, please proceed.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, members of the committee, Ian Hero Cal with DLNR Land Division. We'll stand on our testimony in support of the measure and be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Chair Ayla, please proceed.
Good morning, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Bronco, member of the committee. The department stands in support of SB 2398, SD2. You have our written testimony. I would just point out that we are part of the Kalai Loa Development District and that we would ask to remain on, on that district because we have lands within that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance. And we have testimony in support from the Hawaii Community Development Foundation, Hawaii Community Development Authority. Please proceed. Do we have a representative of HCDA here?
Yes, aloha Chair. Sorry, this is Francine Murray. Craig Nakamoto was not available right now. He's at another hearing. We stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we have written testimony in opposition from Douglas Mellor, League of Women Voters of Hawaii, and written testimony in opposition from Gerard Silva. Is there anyone else here in the room or via remote testimony wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2398? Seeing none, members, any questions? If not, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Senate Bill 2768 relating to the Hawaii Youth Conservation Corps. First up, we have testimony from DLNR. Please proceed, Representative of DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Leah Laramie. On behalf of DLNR, we stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you very much. We have written testimony in support from the Hawaii State Energy Office, written testimony with comments from Department of Budget and Finance. And we have testimony support from Kupu, John Leong. Please proceed.
Aloha Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Bronco. Thank you so much for having us here today and for hearing this bill. We're, we're standing on our written testimony in strong support. This past year, we've been able to work with DLNR on running the Hawaii Youth Conservation Corps Program, the Green Job Youth Corps, and it's been, it's been a great start. We've had over 130 positions and we had over 250% more applicants than their positions available from young adults looking to be involved in the green job sector in Hawaii, which is really encouraging. And we're also seeing a really great demand from the different partner sites that are wanting to work with the program as well, too, where we're seeing many more applications, a couple hundred more applications than we have positions available. So these, these, this work is in conservation, natural resource management, agriculture, and also in clean energy areas. So there's a, there's a, these are all big areas which our state needs to continue to grow in and move in. So we're really excited to be a part of helping Hawaii to move the needle in this direction and creating the next workforce in this area. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leong. And members, we have testimony, written testimony in support from numerous organizations and individuals. Hawaii Greenfee, Anthony Ching with Nature Conservancy, Aspen Billye with Hawaii Forest Industry Association, Ron Wydenbach, Quinn Vitam, Ted Bolan, Kelsey Amos, Diane Riley, Douglas Callison, Andrea Quinn, and Sheri Pollak. Is Quinn Vitam here to testify via remote testimony? Please proceed.
Hi, Chair Tarnas, thanks so much. I really appreciate hearing this bill. And I just wanted to share that we're one of the host sites for the current Kupu Anacor Program. And it's just been really wonderful. We have nine people working here at Reuse Hawaii to help cultivate the circular economy in Hawaii. They're learning specific skills around deconstruction, material processing, and building material reuse. And we also do trainings for, for safety and tool use and teamwork. And so it's just been a wonderful program and giving some folks some stability in their employment. We have a few people that have had to change jobs multiple times throughout the pandemic. So it's wonderful to have them here and give them some stability and training. Mahalo Nui.
Mahalo, Mr. Vitam. Is there anyone else in the room or via remote testimony wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2768? Seeing none, members, any questions? Yes, Representative Bronco.
Or Mr. Leong from Kupu, please?
Aloha, Vice Chair Bronco.
Aloha, Mr. Leong. If you could share with us, I think it's very important to have this program, but also to continue to build that pipeline for long-term job growth in this sector. Could you share with us the statistics of those who complete the program? And then where do they go to afterwards?
Yeah, absolutely. So Kupu has been running programs similar to this for the last 17 years. And it's been really successful. We've seen about an 88% percentage of individuals going on into higher education or into related job fields. And so anecdotally, we, we've taken U.S. Senator Mazie Hirono up to the Makiki Baseyard with Department of Land and Natural Resources, who's, who's been a strong partner with ours. And when we were there, there were about 40 people working at that location and half of them were Kupu alumni or Kupu members. So that really just shows you how this has been really successful and replenishing our workforce within the state and within our nonprofit and other government communities. And, and it's also really encouraging and advocating young people to move on into these, into these fields within the state.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thanks very much. Next bill, Senate Bill 2626 relating to Department of Land and Natural Resources. This is to help Maui Park Section purchasing additional vehicles. On Senate Bill 2626, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources in support. Please proceed.
Hello, Chair. Good morning and members of the committee. My name is Larry Peschekel. I'm the Maui District Superintendent, Intendant, representing DLNR Division of State Parks. The department supports this bill and provided its passage does not replace or adversely impact priorities indicated in our executive budget. So we stand in support.
Thank you very much. Next, we have written testimony with comments from the Department of Budget and Finance, written testimony in support from the Maui Hotel and Lodging Association, and written testimony in support from Andrea Quinn. Is there anyone else in the room or via remote testimony wishing to provide testimony on Senate Bill 2626? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, let's move on to the last measure on our agenda. Senate Bill 2382 relating to cabaret licenses. On this measure, we have written testimony in support from four individuals, Denise Poivert, Mark Yakubovitch, Kim Jorgensen, and Pam Walker. Is there anyone wishing to give testimony on this measure via remote testimony or in the room? Seeing none, questions, members? Questions for each other? Okay. There, that's it. There being no further business to, no further testimony that we need to consider. I'd like to move right into decision-making. We would now go back up to the top of the agenda. We would now go back up to the top of the agenda. Okay, on Senate Bill 2752 relating to abandoned wells. Going back and looking, after reading the testimony, going back and looking, Realtors, sellers and their representatives are already required to disclose any material fact, which would include a well, an abandoned well, an existing well. If they know it, they have to disclose it. So I think that is unnecessary to include these in here. So my recommendation is to delete the sections in here that require Realtors to disclose, since they already are required. And it would delete the prior owner's liability because if they knew it, they had to disclose it. And they are in fact liable for that closure and sealing of the well itself. So my recommendation is to delete those sections of it and make some technical amendments as well. Questions, concerns, members? Representative Kobayashi.
I'm concerned that there are too many blanks in the bill.
Oh, I am. I think, I think that this is not going to proceed, but I do want to, I like the idea of the, I like, I like the idea and concept, but it's not ready. I mean, I don't want to defer the bill because I'd like to move it forward to the next committee. But there are kupus in here and I don't have the answers to what percentage it should be because that's what you're looking for here. Well abandonment compliance income tax credit shall be equal to a blank percent of the qualified compliance cost up to a maximum of blank. We need to fill that in. I don't know the answer to it. So my suggestion is to move it forward, correcting those things that I know I can correct. And then I suspect what I'll do is go back to the introducer of the bill and say, try again next session and fill in the blanks.
Yes. I mean, the other blank is the aggregate amount.
The aggregate amount.
You know, for the entire program.
Yep. True, true. Those are valid concerns and if it makes it to finance, you can make sure that those are either answered or it doesn't move. Other questions, concerns? If not, recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2752 as an HD1. Vice Chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2752 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ganadev?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
W R.
Representative Ka?
Saying W R.
Representative Morikawa? Representative Ono?
Aye.
Representative McDermott is excused. The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 2065. My recommendation is to adopt the recommendation, recommended amendment from Aquatic Resources. Defect the effective date. And also in talking to staff analysts about this, state waters is not a term that is defined in statute, but state marine waters are defined. So I'd like to modify this to add the word marine every place where it says state waters. So this would only apply to state marine waters. So those are my recommendations. Any discussion, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote on Senate Bill 2065 with amendments. Oh, and I want to defect the date, defect the effective date and make technical amendments. Sorry. So those are state marine waters, DLNR amendment, technical amendments, and defecting the date. Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2065 with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative McDermott for this measure and all future measures. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next bill, Senate Bill 2767 relating to fish aggregation devices. I'd like to move this forward as is. Already has a defective date. Discussion. If not, Vice Chair for the vote, Senate Bill 2767 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2767 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next is Senate Bill 3027. I recognize, I read the OPSD testimony on this. I think this is particularly requesting a plan to be done. I realize you say that you're going to need some money to do it. There is no money in here. I'm not proposing to put any money in it. I do want to move it forward because I think the idea is a good idea. And I recognize this may not advance out of finance because of that. But I'd like to move it forward so that we can now talk about how do we come up with this plan and how much would it cost? We may have to come back next session for that. But my recommendation, since it has a defective date, is to move it out as is. SB 3027, comments, discussion, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 3027 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 3027 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next is Senate Bill 872. I am interested to continue this discussion. My recommendation is to move it forward as is. It already has a defective date. Sounds, and I want to acknowledge DLNR's great progress on meeting the needs from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. But I also think that Department of Hawaiian Homelands is eager to build its capacity and take part in their broader responsibilities as the chair had articulated. So with that in mind, I'd like to move this forward as is and move this forward to the next committee where they can have further discussion about this. Comments, discussion, members? Representative Kobayashi?
I think I should go W R on this. I think DLNR has made a good case that they've made progress and the role of conflict, HHL's role would be a conflict of interest.
Understood, and I appreciate you articulating that because those are valid concerns. Other discussion, members?
Yeah, if I may?
Yes, please.
I think this is a very important measure. I think again, this is, goes back to an equity issue for native Hawaiians, especially when it comes to water resources. When I look at the conflict of interest issue, there are many former business owners as well as plantation owners that have sat on seaworm. And so I do not see a conflict of interest having HHL on the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Other comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Senate Bill 872 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 872 as is. Is there any reservations? Representative Kobayashi? Any further reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next, Senate Bill 2889. While I understand why this bill was proposed, it really is unworkable. And so my recommendation is to defer. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, Senate Bill 2757. My recommendation is to pass this out as is. Already has a defective date. Discussion. If not, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 2757 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2757 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 2766. While I have read the LUC testimony on this saying it'd be more productive for the counties to make the recommendation to LUC rather than, in regards to what land should be redesignated rather than have OPSD do a study. In my discussions with OPSD, they are already in discussions with the counties. And in fact, they want to continue those discussions with the counties. The counties have indicated they want to continue that discussion and together come back with recommendations specifically to LUC for redistricting, but also broader discussion about how to facilitate and what kind of criteria to use in making these changes. So I think Land Use Commission certainly has expertise in this area, but they, and they are the ones that would actually do the redesignation. I think there's a role for a planner, you know, planning process in this that is collaborative between OPSD and the counties. And OPSD has assured me that that's in fact what they have been doing and wish to continue. So that is the purpose behind this one. So my recommendation is to pass this bill as is. It has a defective date. Comments, discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 2766 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2766 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 2398 relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority, creating a Pulehunui Community Development District. I would like to move this out with one small change. In discussion with Vice Chair of Finance, who's been very involved in the House versions of this, he recommended that we remove on page six lines one to five and the sentence we're going to remove, I think is going to be helpful. And that is, the sentence that we'll remove is, "Any rules that the authority may adopt on health, safety, building, planning, zoning, and land use for the district shall preempt all other inconsistent county ordinances and county rules relating to the use, zoning, planning, and development of land and construction within the district." And I think that that may avoid some conflicts that it would otherwise create. So with that one change, this already has a defective date. I'd like to remove that one sentence and make some technical amendments. Discussion. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 2398 with an HD1.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2398 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 2768 relating to the Hawaii Youth Conservation Corps. It already has a defective date. And we'd like to move this out as is. Discussion. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 2768 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2768 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 2626 relating to DLNR, providing some additional funding for additional vehicles in Maui Parks. This has a defective date. We've already moved out the House budget, so I'm not sure if this is actually going to be able to fly out of finance. But I do want to move this forward so that that can be a possibility of discussion between the House and Senate. So my recommendation is to move this out as is, since it already has a defective, defective date. Comments, discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Senate Bill 2626 as is.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass Senate Bill 2626 as is. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you. Final bill on our agenda, Senate Bill 2382 relating to cabaret licenses. I think this is, there's a compelling case for passing this out, but I'd like to make sure that it's all done properly. So I'd like to defect the effective date. And pass this out as an HD1. Make it July 1st, 2050. Discussion, members? Yes, Representative Kobayashi.
I think that the approach is good, but perhaps there are other ways of making the cabaret license harder to get. You could increase the percentage of property owners needed to prove something. You could do the two two lines, two circle route where you need a certain percentage in one circle and another percentage in another circle. I can see how cabaret licenses would be much appreciated or at least used by some people in Waikiki.
Certainly. And I, this is a challenging conflict of use in a place like Waikiki where you have residential right next to cabarets which go on until 4:00 AM. And then the party spills out into the street. So your recommendation is a good one, Rep. Kobayashi, and I think I'll follow up with the representative from Waikiki on this matter. This came from his counterpart in the Senate. But I think it's the first time they've ever tried something like this. So perhaps your suggestion is the better route. But I'd like to continue the discussion. So with that in mind, I'd like to move it out with a defective effective date as an HD1. Other discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB 2382 with amendments.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass SB 2382 with amendments. Is there any reservations? Any no votes? The measure passes.
Thank you very much. There being no further business before a state, this meeting is adjourned.